What's that? Okay. All right. I gotta ask, okay? OU? Or OSU? Okay, you don't, you really don't want to step into the middle of that. You don't want to step into the middle of that. Oh, we got one up here that's, that's neutral, Switzerland. Switzerland. Um. Uh, yeah, the University of Tulsa, see what I started, Arkansas, um, Indiana, the Hoosiers. Um. There you go. There you go. Um, so, uh, we've got a minute or two before we start the meeting and, um, I love September. Because in September of nineteen seventy-four, an important rite of passage took place. So some of you may not be aware, I am the third of four boys. My oldest brother goes off to college, joins a fraternity and what happened? Well, you know, flunked out, that may not be flamed out. Let's say flamed out, okay? He flamed out after a year and a half. My next oldest brother goes to a different university, joins a different fraternity and flamed out. So when I, when, when I am ready to graduate from high school, I think I'm not going to be like my brothers. I want to go to college, but I don't want to flame out. So I enlisted in the United States Navy in, in September of nineteen seventy-four. I go to boot camp and two weeks after I get to boot camp, I go to my company commander's door and I knock on the door. And I say, there's been a terrible mistake. I'm ready to go to college. You can imagine how that went. But in the Navy, um, I became a hospital corpsman, which is the equivalent of a certified nurse assistant. I became a, a frontline healthcare worker when I was in the Navy. And I was fortunate enough, this was during the demilitarization of the Vietnam era. So I'm a Vietnam era veteran. I never went to Vietnam, but I served during that period. And I, I was enabled to go from A school, hospital corps school to C school. And I became an operating room technician. So for the full term of my enlistment, I passed instruments in surgery, all kinds of different surgeries, general surgery, neurological surgery, did a lot of C-sections. Did a lot of C-sections. Um, uh, and I would be on call, I'd get, I'd get a call and you had to be at the hospital in, in, uh, you know, a very short amount of time and, you know, all, all of those things. So it was a great, great experience, but, um, uh, and it prepared me to go to college. It literally, it catapulted me through college. Because when I got out of the Navy, I thought to myself, I do not, I have one chance and I don't want to miss it. So in September of nineteen seventy-eight, I walked onto the campus of Indiana University in Bloomington, Indiana. And I was scared to death. I was petrified. Thirty-five thousand students, thirty-five thousand students. So we're going to open today and we're going to pray for everybody that has gone, had to go back to school. And we're especially going to pray for those freshmen who are making the transition from adolescence to adulthood. And you know what we're going to pray? We're going to pray that they don't flame out. Okay, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for fall. We thank you for the transition that this season brings. And we pray for, for everyone who's going back to school, every student who is stepping up into a new level. We pray for every teacher. We pray for the, for the school system in the city of Tulsa. We pray for Tulsa Public Schools and for Union and for Jenks and for Bixby and Sepulpa. We pray for Owasso. We pray for the state of Oklahoma. Lord, bring your grace and mercy into the statewide educational system so that it can be focused on its mission of raising up the next generation of Oklahomans. Lord, we pray for those who are vulnerable. Um, and those who are moving out from underneath the covering of their parents and into independent adulthood, we pray, Lord, that they would make that transition smoothly. Give them wisdom and discernment. Keep them. Keep them, Lord, from the temptation of youthful ignorance. Protect them and watch over them. And Lord, whether they go to Indiana University or Arkansas, the University of Arkansas, or, or whether they're Cowboys or Sooners, we pray that you would watch over them and bless them. Because we need them. We need them. Their gifts are needed by the world. So today, um, we give you thanks also for Trinity Woods and for its mission of serving this community in the spirit of Christ. And we pray in Jesus' name that you would watch over us and guide us through every change that is about to occur in this community. And we thank you for your providence because you go before us in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Um, Bonnie's coming up. Before she does, I want to ask this question. If this is your first town hall, would you please lift your hand? It is so good to have you. It is so good to have you. Thank you so much for being here. I want to, I want to take just a second to acknowledge, uh, Dr. Mack Hemaia, who's here in the front row. Dr. Hemaia, um, immigrated to the United States from Egypt, met a beautiful woman and they got married. And they taught at Northwestern Louisiana State University in the nursing program. They trained an entire generation of nurses. And, um, Dr. Mack's son is the pastor of the church at Battle Creek, Alex Hemaia. So we are so honored to be able to acknowledge you today. And we thank you for, uh, everything that you've done, uh, to serve and to bless other people. Thank you so much. And with that, Bonnie's got some fun for us.
Okay. We're doing trivia today in honor of it being, oopsie, football season, we're going to do football trivia. Okay, so stay with me. So which NFL team is known as America's team? Uh, see, I started off easy. You're right, the Cowboys.
Wait a minute, how come the Patriots are not America's team?
They're not likable. How many of you are Cowboys fans? I would think a lot of people just by virtue of this area.
But the Patriots, didn't they win the revolution?
Not in Dallas. Okay. Which of these college football teams has the most national championship wins? Yale University, the University of Oklahoma, the University of Alabama, the University of Michigan? This was a fascinating question to me. It's actually Yale University. Um, and I had to write what it said when I was researching this. Yale football has one of the most impressive resumes in sports. Two of the first three Heisman Trophy winners, one hundred All-Americans, twenty-eight Hall of Fame inductees, eighteen national championships recognized by the NCAA, which is crazy. So it is Yale. You should know that their national titles are really from the eighteen hundreds, but still technically they are the reigning of this.
Okay, now wait a minute, wait a minute. Do we have any Yale alumni here?
Weldon, but he's not here.
We do have a Yale alumni. Weldon Tisdale is an alumni of Yale University.
Basketball player.
Oh, Jim Davidson?
I was gonna say.
Oh, my goodness, that's awesome. Yeah, that's great.
His undergrad was OU, okay. Next question, which NFL team claims to have coined the term tailgating? Detroit Lions, Chicago Bears, Green Bay Packers, Tampa Bay Buccaneers? Is it Bears or would, who is every? Okay, the answer is the Green Bay Packers, which is funny because who wants to tailgate when you're recent to death? But hey, whatever. Anyway. In researching this, I found it actually that they tailgated in the Civil War. Fun fact, um, in eighteen sixty-one, and, um, they used to tailgate to watch the battle. I thought that was an interesting. So I went with this fun fact. Okay, which two teams played the first ever college football game? Ohio University, Michigan, in Michigan, Harvard and Dartmouth, Rutgers and Princeton, or Yale and Princeton? D, I love that I'm stumping you guys today, I just have to tell you. Rutgers and Princeton were the very first college football game of record. I don't know if they scrapped it out when it was unofficial, but this is the official first college football game. Okay, in night, in two thousand nineteen, the most expense, the most expensive average ticket was seven hundred and sixty-two dollars for an NFL football team. Which team? Final answers? New England Patriots. There you go. The Patriots are the most expensive. Okay. And because I'm a giant OU fan, I had to end with an OU trivia. The University of Oklahoma has the longest winning streak in college football history. True or false? Is one hundred percent true with forty-seven wins. See? Okay, thank you guys for playing along.
That is fun. Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing the fun. Now, do we know why tailgating started in Green Bay, Wisconsin? It's because you have to run from your car to the football stadium because it's so cold. All right. Um. Each month, we have the distinct privilege of uh, recognizing, uh, employees for their excellent performance. And we also recognize milestones in employment. And we have a very special award to give this month. And I'm going to ask Bonnie to come forward and I'm going to ask Heidi to come forward. Because Heidi is the star of the month for September. Now I want you to just close your eyes for a minute. And I want you to, I want you to ask yourself this question. What would it be like to work for Steve? Okay? And then I want you to, I want you to leave your eyes closed and then I want you to ask yourself this question. What would it be like to work for Bonnie? Um, I think that Heidi is on the fast track to sainthood. Because in order to be a saint, you have to perform, uh, multiple certifiable miracles. And she's already done that. Um, uh, we're so proud to acknowledge you as the star of the month. Um, uh, I said, this is what the certificate says. We're all very fortunate to have Heidi on our team. Her enthusiasm and cheerful smile greet every, greet, her cheerful smile greet everyone she encounters. She joyfully takes on all kinds of challenges. And when we count our blessings, we count Heidi. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We don't have any, um, we don't have any, uh, uh, employment milestones this month, but I neglected to share with you a couple of things that I think are really interesting about Heidi. Um, Heidi grew up in a military family and so she moved all across the country. Um, guess what she wanted to be as a kid? She wanted to be a cowgirl. Her favorite sport is softball. Her one meal forever is a garden tuna salad. She's described by her friends as smart, kind and fun. Her first job was a, being a server at Western Sizzler. How about that? A hostess at Western Sizzler. Uh, her favorite recipe is holiday hash brown casserole. Um, her favorite movie is Kiss Me Kate. Her favorite book, what do you think her favorite book is? It's Heidi. It's Heidi. I'm surprised that it would be hard for you to guess that. Uh, she collects hats in her spare time. Um, she loves taking spontaneous road trips. And, um, she's married with one son. So thank you so much. Um. So there are three things that I would like to talk to you about as part of my report. The first is that I want to, I want to go back and I want to touch on what occurred at last month's town hall. I want to address the concern that we raised at last month's town hall. And I want to basically explain to you the sequence of events that have taken place since town hall. Um. After town hall last month, several community members expressed concerns about the changes that we announced, uh, in the report that was presented on the fireside chat feedback. Um, we had a member council meeting that followed a couple of days later. And the council was extremely helpful in communicating to us the concerns that were voiced, uh, in the wake of town hall. And we made some mistakes. Um, the biggest mistake that we made was the, the, the way that we communicated. And we apologize for that. I apologize for that. There was an error in judgment. This was a more significant issue than, um, than we, we didn't, we, we, we should have recognized that the issue is more significant than it was. It shouldn't have been buried as a, as a part of a report on fireside chats. It should have really been presented as a management decision related to a significant issue that affects everybody here. And that is dining services at Trinity Woods. And so I acknowledge the, the, uh, the error in what, how we communicated. And we also acknowledged that this should have been presented to the member council before it was announced to the community. And Howard and the members of the member council have been very gracious. We've changed the schedule of member council so that member council will now meet before, uh, town hall. And we, we are committed to avoiding that situation in the future. We then scheduled a follow-up meeting with the member council. And in that follow-up meeting, we, we, we developed a communication piece that was to be distributed to everyone on the campus. And the information that was in that letter that everyone received was reviewed by the member council and, uh, uh, adopted by the member council prior to it going out. Now, not everyone agrees with the decision that was made. And unfortunately, that's a practical reality of leadership. Sometimes there are going to be disagreements about the best course of action. And unfortunately, not everyone is going to agree on an issue that affects people's pocketbooks. That's this issue. So we presented what we were going to send out. It was delivered to the member council prior to its distribution. And then on the twenty-sixth, um, that letter went out. Of, uh, August twenty-sixth, that letter went out. A full report of management's actions was presented to the board of directors of Trinity Woods on August twenty-seventh. We explained what happened in town hall. We explained the communication process that went on with the member council. And we explained the information that was going to be communicated in the letter. And, um, uh, so a full report was presented to the board at its August meeting. Um. Again, this is not a situation where everyone's going to agree. And unfortunately, we're charged with the task of managing the operations at Trinity Woods. And we take that responsibility very, very seriously. Um, we understand that this is not a popular decision. Uh, and we love it when we can reach a consensus and move forward with everyone in agreement. We do believe that people have choices and that reasonable accommodations have been made to, for those who need them. And we stand by the decision that we believe is in the best interest of Trinity Woods. So the changes that were announced in the letter will go into effect on September eleventh, as were, were previously announced. I can pause there and see if anybody has any questions. Yes, Raleigh? Oh, boy.
Steve, will you repeat that question, please?
The question was, how do we define the best interest of Trinity Woods? That is an outstanding, that's an outstanding question. Sometimes it's difficult to discern. Um, sometimes what's in the best interest of some people is not in the best interest of others. Um, sometimes it requires wisdom and discernment. And sometimes in the moment, it's very hard to tell. But here's the interesting thing. That is exactly what exec, effective executive leadership is responsible for doing. Um, as I survey the landscape, I've talked with as many people as I am aware of about this decision. And it's not possible to reach a consensus. And so making a difficult decision that in our sincere belief is in the best interest is what we have, what we believe we have done. Yes, question back here?
Yes. It appears that we're all being forced to dine in the dining room to save money, to be able to get the chef's choice, which is what I always order. And for me right now, I don't want to be down in the dining or meeting. Number two, if I eat at five o'clock, which is what you have to do, then I've got a very long, lonely evening ahead of me. I think it's not fair to, for those of us who, well, and the other thing is the chef's choice, to deprive us of having the chef's choice. It's not the five dollars extra, but if I want to eat in my apartment, I want to eat what I want to eat.
Thank you very much.
I think there's still a lot of confusion on, on the whole procedure. For instance, uh, when you eat in Crestwood, if you have food to take with you, the policy there. Uh, if you buy something in the tree top, what the policy is there. I still hear just all kinds of confusion, people doesn't understand how it's working.
I'd like to ask Dennis Graham to answer the question about, I'd like to, um, I'd like to ask Dennis Graham to answer the question about the procedure or the policy for what you can carry out and how this, how this policy affects tree top.
So let's start with tree top. Um, tree top, uh, it is basically, you can order a sandwich, the special of the week, like if you have on Tuesday. I think we have, uh, sliced ham, ham and cheese sandwich. Um, that's wrapped in foil. You take that to go. There's no to-go fee for the items that are taken out of tree top. Cause you, 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 you're not going to really get an entire meal. You're not going to get a salad, a drink. You know, you may get a drink, but you're not getting a salad and dessert and those types of things. Um, a lot of people go there and get ice cream, those kinds of things. They come in a cup, you take those with you. As far as the, uh, to-go containers for the dine-in, they're going to be limited to a small container to take, uh, with you, your leftovers, what you don't eat. And you can also take your soup, which is, uh, going to be just a regular soup cup. They're not going to give you the big containers that it takes to service the to-go order process. So you'll get, you'll get what you need adequate enough to take what, with you, what, um, what's left over on your plate. And there's not a fee for that. But if you order to go, uh, that's processed and serviced as a to-go order through the dining room. Um, there will, that, that's where the fee will apply.
Yeah, uh, my name is Alice Edwards and I live in the patio homes. And, uh, I have heard the staff and they also, uh, some of the residents speaking in terms of that, uh, Trinity Woods or OMM is in line with other facilities. And, uh, with all due respect, when my late wife, beautiful Ruth, and I came here about seven years ago, we chose Trinity Woods or OMM because it was not in line. It was hands above any of the other facilities. And during the interview process at that time, uh, we were told that we had the benefit of having a luxury dining room meal, a nourishing dining room meal, or we could enjoy that in the privacy of our homes. And I think that what I hear with the new policies, uh, we cannot take out the, uh, more nutritious meal, which is the chef's favorite. Uh, is that, uh, I didn't mention it exactly, but is that a correct?
That's correct. The chef's feature will be available for dine-in only.
Or why, why is that?
It's a management choice. It's intended to, um, well, actually Dennis has some information, if I, if I can.
Well, I appreciate the transparency and.
So, yeah. Um, the volume of chef's features that are ordered for takeout has disrupted the equilibrium of service in the Charter Oak restaurant. The volume is so high that it has two downside effects. Raleigh asked a question, why is this in the best interest of Trinity Woods? The volume of chef's special orders has reached a, a level that it disrupts the ability of the Charter Oak, um, uh, kitchen staff and service staff to serve people in the dining room. And it's created a situation where people who actually come to enjoy those meals that you talked about are prevented from doing that because by the time they get to the restaurant, all of the chef's specials have been ordered. And so um, that's the reason why the chef's feature is no longer going to be offered in carryout.
Well, I, I see, I appreciate that. I don't want to be argumentative, but.
Excuse me, just a second.
Excuse me.
It's not that you can't order a carryout meal. You. You can order any carryout meal that you want. It's just that if you want the chef's special, that's only going to be available for dine-in.
Okay, thank you. And I don't want to be argumentative, but I consider the chef's special a nutritious meal. Now, what you're saying is that we don't have to call that the chef's special. We can order the daily, whatever it might be, with beans, corn, potatoes, or what it might be. We can order that and then paying a $5 takeout, we can take it out with us while we're home.
You, you can order from the menu, yes, anything you want off the menu. But the chef's special is a special daily that's produced a week in advance, not the meal. But what the choice is going to be is produced a week in advance. And you guys get those in your inboxes of what those are going to be. You're more than welcome to enjoy those specials in the dining room, but those will not be available to get for, for the to-go process. Anything on the menu will be.
Okay, I'm going to have one last statement, please. And to me, that becomes a management problem. Why can't you have people that carry in reservations just to tell you that they want the chef's special and let the kitchen prepare for it, just like when we order?
So here's the problem.
Okay.
If I put it out a week in advance and I've got five items. I've got chicken steak, ham, liver and onions, fried chicken. And I've got it out a week in advance and I have to bring those supplies in to have them available for that meal. You can't, no, no one's going to order a volume a week in advance of what they want. So the chef's special is going to be available in the dining room only. It's a production challenge.
Well, I understand that. But here again, I said the last word, but you, we have been here six, almost seven years. And then there's a lot of history and time management studies. I'm sure you did. Thank you both for phenomenal management of this facility. But you can plan ahead by, you know, it looks to me like with a simple majority of what you've been doing, Dennis, and I don't, and I didn't, it doesn't take to me a, a lot of management skills to do that. And I know you guys have them.
I'm really sorry that I, I started this by saying, I understand that this is an unpopular decision. And I understand that we may not be able to reach agreement about it. We've tried to be as transparent as we know how to be. And what we've communicated is what we believe is a decision that's in the best interest of the organization. And I'm sorry that you don't agree with that. I understand that you don't agree. Thank you. Yes.
The reason people's, the reason people started ordering from their rooms is that the service in the dining room is so bad. And if all of us who want the chef's special come down for dinner, one, we will run out of the chef's special, just as we always do. And the dining room will be mobbed.
What I, what I can say from our standpoint is we apologize for the issues that, that we've had. We're working on those. We've made some adjustments. We've made some corrections. I met with Richard Ling and Kelsey yesterday for over an hour. We're going to make some adjustments in personnel of what their responsibilities are going to be and how they're going to, how they're going to perform in the dining room. I, I, I can just tell you that we would, we welcome the challenge. And it is our desire to get the service back to what your expectations are or what you felt like we were producing before we started having the challenge. So we're 100% committed to that. And we're going to, we're going to keep, keep going forward and do absolutely the best we can. The chef's special is probably, you know, it, it may run out. It's not intended to feed the whole community. It's, it's, it is, it is a process of what we have as a special. So we, we very well, it very, it's very possible we could, but it's, it's our goal not to do that. I'm not, I'm not telling you anything about time at all. I'm not. Yeah. I, I would.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
There's one solution I don't think you've considered. I know a lot of the people want to take out the special. Why not instead at 4:30 picking up the special? How about they pick it up at six o'clock and get it if there's food on the special leftover?
Thank you for that suggestion. Julia?
I don't think this will be well received by everyone either. My thought has been to, I've been here 11 and a half years. And when we started with the buffet, it was wonderful. So my suggestion is totally do away with the chef's special. Keep menus so that we can order a variety of meats and vegetables, et cetera. Maybe change that up a little bit more than what has been changed up. But anything that is quote special, be put on the buffet.
Thank you very much.
I see a tension between two policies. One, we want to fill up all of the vacancies. And that is done sometimes by meeting people who have some permanent liabilities that make it difficult to come to the dining room. Now, on the other hand, we're instituting a policy that will penalize them if they then can't come to the dining room regularly. So that produces, it seems to me, a tension in policies there.
Thank you.
I'd like to change the subject to the letter you sent out yesterday about the decorations. And can you explain why?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question, Phyllis.
She said she wanted to change the subject and talk about the letter that came out yesterday about decorations.
Okay. Okay.
I have. Whose idea was that to change it?
We'll get to that on the agenda.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, hang on. I'll answer that, Phyllis, here in a minute. Okay?
I am wondering about the fee for delivery. We have not been informed as to whether that will be removed as part of our food fee or if it will be an additional charge.
That's a great question. So the question was, let me, let me rephrase it and make sure that I understand. I believe the question was, are you able to use dining dollars for the delivery fee? And the answer to that is yes. Yes, it's not going to be, it's not a cash charge or anything like that. It will be, it will come off your dining. Yes.
Okay, question here.
Yes, Dr. Mack.
I'd like to expand about the definition of how that related to the goal of Trinity Wood. Every organization have conceptual framework and philosophy and then details. So why that is a part of the interest of Trinity Wood? Because in the philosophy of that, to meet the need of the community and to make it more or less feasible. And obviously, all organize our own business, increase the price without prior notice. Because the market gets very expensive and cannot just more or less manage. And I'll be closing. So that is a reason, one of the reasons that require the organization to make technical and small things to manage and to not to be in debt. There's a bottom line with the quality of the organization and the conceptual work that all that fits in that picture. But the philosophy and all that doesn't deal with day-to-day business. How much this costs, how much of that, but the bottom line, we don't want to be in debt. So I'd just like to add that.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
My great concern at this time of year that you're enacting this and we're going into flu season, COVID season, RSV, and we're supposed to go downstairs, eat in a room full of people without a mask, you can't eat, wearing a mask.
So there's a provision for anyone who is experiencing symptoms for, for that person. Just to clarify, there is just to clarify, there is a provision where Lupina waives the carryout fee for people who are experiencing symptoms or who are temporarily unable to go to the dining room. Yes, Jane?
I have a question about the, what you can carry out. The way you get variety, I don't know of any restaurant that I've ever been to that I wanted to eat this, the same restaurant, day after day, after day, after day, after day, my whole life. Which if you don't get the special, that's what your menu is, is the same thing day after day, after day. And I'm just wondering, I had been told that they're thinking of expanding the to-go menu. Did I understand that correctly?
Um, I can check on that, Jane. I'm not aware of that, that I, I haven't had that conversation with them. But we can, I can get you more information on that. Yep, I, I honestly don't, don't know, not heard that.
We have another question over here.
According to the letter that came out, the charge will be $5 per meal to pick up. And so when you pick up two meals, that's $10, which takes away half of your monthly allowance. So that, for those of us that pick up meals, that's a big chunk of the allowance that's gone.
Thank you for your comment.
You know, when our member counsel, Gary Van Posen brought up that this is a peanut compared to the big picture. Steve, what you have got here, sir, is that you've got a whole community that is very upset over this issue and there ought to be a way to get us happy with it.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the floor for discussions and I'm going to move on.
One more, Steve, Angela, she's had.
I'm sorry, Angela.
I just wanted some clarification, Dennis. Did I understand correctly that earlier you said that if we wanted our soup to go, there would not be a charge for that container to go?
So I said, here, let me clarify, okay? What I said was, is that if you eat in the dining room, if, if you eat in the dining room and you did not eat your soup, you're welcome to take it to go. Excellent.
Is that the same with the salad as for follow-up?
Same with the salad bar? No. Correct. You can take the, the, the containers that they give you, you can, you can put whatever you want into that container. You're, you're more than welcome to do that, that, that you don't eat. Say that again? The containers will be the appropriate size for what would be. Yeah. Yes, for what, for, for what you would carry out. Yeah, so let me clarify. If, if you set it to table and eat your meal, you will, you will receive a small container to take your leftovers to go. So I want to make sure I'm clear, Al. We're not going to give you containers at the table so you can take your meal to go. You're not going to be able to go in the dining room and sit down and, and order a meal and then say, okay, now I want to take this to go. Okay, that, that, that doesn't apply. What applies is, is whatever you have left after you eat in the dining room, they will give you the container. And if you want it, a lot of folks don't eat their soup with their dinner. They want to take it. And we understand that. So we'll, we'll, we'll give a soup container as well. So you can, you can take whatever's on your plate that, that will fit in that container with you. Yes, absolutely. Unfortunately, we can't. Yeah, that's a health department issue.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for your comments. We, we take seriously the commitment that we have to delivering a quality dining program. And we, we, I'm, I'm so grateful that Liz and Richard are here. All of us want to meet or exceed your expectations. This is not an easy issue. It's been a difficult decision. And we will do our best to, to serve you in the best way that we can going forward. Thank you very much, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you.
I want to take a minute to give you an update on a couple of things. First of all, on September 1st, on, on September 1st, let me back up. In June, you remember that Curtis Craig came and he informed the Trinity Woods community of the discussion that I had had with the board about my plans to step down as the CEO of Trinity Woods in March of 2024. A succession planning task force that is made up of five board members. Jim Taylor, who's a member at Asbury, Beverly Smith, who's a member at Boston Avenue, Bob Paragino, who's a, Jim, Jim is the former founder, co-founder of Hogan Taylor, which is a large regional accounting firm in, in the city of Tulsa. Beverly Smith is an estate planning attorney with the firm of Connor Winters. Bob Paragino is a judge. He is also a member at Asbury. Curtis Craig is the former chief legal counsel for Explorer Pipeline. And he's a member at Asbury. And Sarah Everett is retired from IBM. Sarah is a member at First Methodist Church. We've added two community members to the succession planning task force, Gary Van Fossen and Charlotte Fraser. And I want to acknowledge Crystal Creek Moore and Bill Peterson. They're in the back. And I want to acknowledge Crystal Creekmore and Bill Peterson, they're in the back. Crystal and Bill and Tracy Henry do an amazing job of serving the more than 200 employees that work at Trinity Woods. And Crystal and Bill are responsible for guiding the screening process that will take place as a part of this process. On September 1st, we basically went public with the posting of this open position. If you're interested in learning more about it, you can go to the Trinity Woods website. And in the careers tab, you can look at the posting for the position. So basically, the way recruiting works right now is that much of it is done electronically. And that electronic posting has taken place. We've also sent out kind of a broadcast email to professional networks. And I want you to know that over the next few months, we, that is the succession planning task force and the HR team will be transparent with you about the process that is about to unfold. So we're going to be transparent about the process, but we are going to be confidential about the people. We're going to be confidential about the people because these, many of these people are currently employed somewhere else. They're taking a significant, they're being tremendously vulnerable by expressing an interest in this position. And we want to respect that vulnerability, that risk that they're taking by throwing their name into the hat. So we will not talk about people, we will talk about processes. I'll give you an example of what I mean. Bill informed me this morning that a total of 68 applications have already been received. 14 of the 68 have specific experience in the senior living sector. So that's transparency about the process. I'm not going to mention a single name to you that come from that group. But I do want to encourage you to think about something. As we just demonstrated, your voice is very, very important. Okay? And it's possible that maybe you don't know somebody, but maybe your kids or even your grandkids may know somebody that would be interested in applying for this position. If you want to know about the qualifications, all you have to do is go to that website and you can look at them there. But by all means, I would encourage all of you to join in the process of praying for the future of Trinity Woods. This is an amazing organization with an amazing executive leadership team. The board is as strong a board as I have ever seen in a nonprofit organization. And we have a, we have a very, very strong organization with a great plan for the future. We've done things like we've acquired most of the subdivision immediately to our west. And the possibilities for growth in the organization are tremendous. And as everybody knows, the need for the services that we provide is growing every day. 10,000 people turn 65 every single day. And so the future of the organization is bright. And I just want to encourage you that, I want to encourage you to engage in the process. We're so grateful to everybody that provided feedback about the qualifications that are necessary. And those, that feedback has been provided to the succession planning task force. Let me pause there and see if anybody has any questions about the process that I'd be happy to respond to. That's a great question. The question was, when will the applicant be on board? We don't really know about that. I've talked about a timeline that would have me stepping down in March of 2024. So Al, if, if I were to kind of paint a picture, what I would say is the recruiting process will occur in September, October, and November. The screening process will take place in December. And a decision would be made in January. And what that would allow is plenty of overlap time to assure, you know, the successful passing of the baton. Very good. Any other questions? Okay. I will move on. One of the attributes that's necessary for a successful CEO is to boldly go where angels fear to tread. So I want you to know that, that listening and engaging with you even when the anxiety and when the frustration rises is something that I'm 100% committed to continuing to do. So what I want to alert you to is that fireside chats will begin again next month. We started this last year. We were committed to doing this, and so we're going to schedule a number of fireside chats in the month of October. We want everybody who would like to participate to come, and I just want to alert you to that. The second, the final thing that I want to talk to you about is that one of the, one of the most valuable and yet intangible assets of an organization is, is what we talked about earlier. It's the culture of the organization. And the culture of the organization is so important that this fall, if you ask me, what legacy do you want to leave at Trinity Woods? I don't want my name on a building. I don't, I don't want that kind of recognition. What I want to do is I want to leave a legacy of a positive culture for the organization. And so eight years ago in 2015, a group of us, many of whom are still here, gathered together and we worked on defining the culture of courtesy that we aspired to establish at Trinity Woods. If you were part of that meeting in 2015, would you raise your hand? So Julia was there, Raleigh was there. That, that meeting resulted in the development of the Culture of Courtesy Guidelines, which are included in every member handbook at Trinity Woods. It's been eight years since we've done that. And as the show of hands demonstrated, many people who are here now weren't here then. And so what we would like to do is to gather in, gather together and refresh the Culture of Courtesy Guidelines that were established in 2015. And there are two steps in this process. The first step is that on the 26th of September, every board member, every member of the executive leadership team at Trinity Woods and every member of the member council is going to participate, going to be invited to participate in a Zoom call that will, that will take place from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. We're going to do the Zoom call in the theater room of Crestwood. And for people that, that can't come, that can't participate in person, we're going to make that, that recording available. And basically, this is going to be kind of a train the trainer seminar. And then the following week, on Tuesday, October 3rd, in this room, everybody on the campus that wants to come is going to be invited to come. And the meeting will start at 10 o'clock in the morning, we'll have lunch together, and it will end at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. And we're going to refresh those guidelines, that, those Culture of Courtesy Guidelines as a part of that process. So you're going to see announcements about this. The only thing that we ask is that if you, if you want to come, we would like for you to register so that we can be prepared and, and ready for you. But we'd like to fill this room. We're gonna, we're gonna enter into a discussion about what are the behaviors that strengthen community? What are the behaviors that are detrimental to community? And we would love it for as many of you as would like to come to register for that event. Does anybody have any questions about the Culture of Courtesy refresher? Okay, if not, Dennis Graham, oh, excuse me, Bonnie Pollak is next.
Hello? I'm a little nervous. Just kidding. No, I wanted to do our September drawing for referrals. And I want to say that as I've listened to all of you, I know at the end of the day, you guys do love living here and you do tell your friends about us, so I appreciate it very much. And the fact that we can have these discussions and still walk away knowing that your neighbor loves you and that you feel heard is such a blessing. And I know that's what makes us kind of special. So please, please continue to bring in your referrals. I'm very excited because actually all three that I have in my hand, I think are people that are going to move in in the next three months. So good job. So I want to thank you guys for doing that, but I'm going to let Steve draw for our September winner. Oh, sorry. Oh, it is a new member, Dwayne and Janice Blankenship. They did a referral, so Dwayne, I don't know if I've seen them here today, but I will make sure that they get their money. So thank you, and please continue to bring them. We are very busy with tours, but it is something, and your referrals mean a lot because they love to talk about how they know you and coming to different things with you. So thank you for that. And the other thing I just wanted to say is we are recruiting for employee appreciation campaign. You guys run that every year. And this year's chairs are Andy Ewing and Raleigh Rhodes. And if you are interested in helping that committee, whether it's just reminding your neighbors to contribute, helping with the party, writing thank you notes, please get with one of them. We are starting to recruit for that committee and it is truly run by the members as a thank you to the staff. So if you are interested in that, please get with one of them and let them know so we can get you on that list. Thank you.
Dennis?
Good morning. Couple of things, just kind of reflecting back to Bonnie's trivia. I didn't see Oklahoma State on that list. But I'm still a fan and
I can't help that.
I'm still hoping that we're going to get there. So anyway. One exciting thing. We just received a text that says, I have issued the ABLE license. Please be sure to obtain a city beer and wine permit and post a bond and good luck with your business. So we have, we've gotten that approval. We just got that this morning. So we'll get, we'll get our permit and we'll post our bond and we'll, we'll be good to go. So I'm sorry for the length of time it's taken, but working with some of the city agencies and government agencies is a bit difficult. A couple of things. The roofing project that we've talked about several times, we finally got confirmation. Materials are on the way. They should be here, I believe, next week. There's a flyer going out today that will explain a lot of the safety procedures, a lot of the exits, or excuse me, entrances that are going to be blocked and different routes that you'll need to take. I want to make sure everyone understands and is paying attention to this part of the process. Even though the exits will be blocked to entrance, if there is an emergency in the building, they will never be blocked to an emergency to exit the building. So all we're trying to do is keep people out of that area to make sure that everyone is safe when they're dropping shingles and things like that off of the roofs down into chutes and into trucks and things of that nature. So please, please pay attention to those caution tapes. Don't, don't, don't lift them up like I've seen before and walk under there to see what's going on. If you need to know, call me, I'll tell you. I'll be more than happy to give you, give you an update. The other thing that, that was, was brought up earlier was the furniture, excuse me, the redecorating in Crestwood corridors. What we're doing is at the end of the corridors, where Trinity Woods has furniture as a part of the common space decor. We're starting to get a lot of personal decor. Our decor is getting replaced with personal stuff. So what we're doing is in the, in the letter that you received or in the flyer, it indicates that if you have stuff in the corridor to please pick it up, we'll hang on to it for a week or so. If no one claims it, we'll take it to the bargain basement and process it through the bargain basement. So what we're trying to do is just get, get back, get back to a more consistent decor. And they'll be coming through and decorating those here very soon. So that's what that is. I wanted to answer Jane's question real quick about the to-go menu. The to-go menu is not going to be expanded. What, what Richard indicated was, is that they're going to rotate a couple of items off of it more often on a weekly basis. So there's going to be more of a rotation on the to-go menu than there currently is. So it's not really an expansion, it's more of a rotation, taking things off, putting things on. And I'm sure there'll be some debate when we take a chicken salad sandwich off or something and those types of things. So please let, let us know and we'll do everything we can to try to make sure that we accommodate as often as possible on that. And aside from that, we still, we're still working on the road projects for, excuse me, for Quebec, Pittsburgh Court, Pittsburgh Place, and also the curb replacements around the entrance to Crestwood that are deteriorating. We're just, we're simply waiting on that, those things are funded by, by, by member, membership fees. And we're just, we're just waiting on, we've got several in the works. Bonnie and the Her crew has done a really good job. We're just waiting on some more of those to process through. And we do still intend to start that process before the end of this year. So we, we are aware that it's out there. We're aware that we haven't been able to get to it yet, but we will get to it as soon as we get that, get that, that funding available. And aside from that, I think that's pretty much all I have. Does anyone have any questions for me? Yes, Phyllis?
I still understand the decorating. So outside my door, I have an angel. Does that mean I have it out there now?
Your, your door? If, if it's right outside your door, that, that's not going to be affected. It's the stuff at the end of the corridors, at the very end of the corridors that, that, that are going to be redecorated and redone. The space around your door, you're welcome to decorate. Just don't block the corridor. Yeah.
Okay, but like the houses has a beautiful flower arrangement outside their door, that table. Does that mean they have to keep, can they keep?
If it's on a, if it's on a Trinity Woods common space table, it will need to be removed and it will be replaced with Trinity Woods decor.
Yeah, on holidays, we went Fourth of July, so during the holidays.
You, you talk about decorating the corridors at, on the holidays?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can, we can work with, we'll work with Carrie on that. And we'll, I know we've always done that in the past and we'll try to accommodate that. That's not an issue. It's just the everyday decor that gets switched out. Somebody has a cat out there and they don't like cats and they put a dog and, you know, somebody, just, it's just different things like that that we just, we need to get more consistency to. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, does that say anything else? Yes?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for putting the swan back together.
Oh, good. Thank you. I didn't do that. Whoever did, I'll tell them. Thank you. So I had a couple more. We're good? You saw the fox? Did you see four foxes? Oh, good. I think we're making ground. We're catching up. All right. Thank you very much.
Would you please join me in expressing appreciation to Lapina for the leadership that she provided in the wellness fair yesterday? If you were a volunteer at the wellness fair yesterday, would you please stand up so that we can express our appreciation to you? Thank you so much. Look at that. If you walked away with some free stuff yesterday, would you please, uh, wave at us? Yeah, there you go. Um, that was awesome. I'm so grateful to everybody, uh, for, uh, your involvement and thank you for everything that you did to organize it.
Yeah, I think I was scolded because I was treating, uh, that buffet almost like a holiday. You just kind of graze throughout the day, uh, come, come back. So, um, all right, I've got Lapina here because, uh, shots, it's shot season. And there's lots of questions about vaccine. Um, and so I can answer things more from the licensed area perspective. And, uh, Lapina is going to give you updates for, uh, everywhere else, independent living and with staff. So there's really two, and I guess RSV, you've got that one too. So, um, in the licensed areas, we will be doing our flu, uh, clinic here at the end of this month. So we're doing that through Boomer. So if you live in either the Health Center, Holloman, or Marshall Gaddy and Barnes, uh, we'll be getting with those individuals, their family members, get those consents done. And I think it's the 27th, uh, this month. Anybody that moves in after that, we'll catch them up to date. On the COVID vaccine, we are waiting next Tuesday to the CDC is going to meet. And it's a full assumption that they're going to approve this next booster that's coming out, uh, that will hit all the variants that are essentially out there. And then pharmacies will start scheduling those things for us. We are thinking that it's probably going to be in October, kind of early October, that we will host a, uh, a COVID vaccine clinic for the licensed areas. At that time, staff will be able to do that too. But, uh, those are kind of the two clinics that we have coming in the licensed areas.
So we will be, um, for the independent living folks and some of the staff who aren't able to get it at, in an earlier, um, opportunity, uh, we'll be working with Walmart to come here to do our, um, COVID vaccine as soon as it gets rolled out, um, into their pharmacies, probably the end of September. So look towards the end of September, first of October, before we can have that clinic. As soon as I have an absolute date, um, set up for you, then I'll send a flyer out. So keep an eye out for that. We'll do it similarly like we've done in the past where we kind of split the campus up a little bit, have a couple of, um, hours of timeframe for you guys to come. But we should have enough opportunity to, to, to be able to do that. And once that kind of gets rolled out, if you happen to miss it or something, or if you have to have it sooner than what we have planned, uh, very likely, um, you'll be able to get that at a pharmacy. It's been a while since they've had a rollout, so there may be some lines and you may have to do an online appointment or something like that. But, um, you should be able to get it, um, elsewhere too. So that's for the COVID vaccine. People have asked about the flu vaccine and yes, we will have a vaccine clinic for that as well. We try to do that one in October, uh, just to try to carry us through the entire flu season. So late part of October, sometime before Halloween, um, we will, uh, do a, a flu clinic for, um, all of independent living. Along with the flu vaccine, they'll also be offering the RSV vaccine. RSV is rep, um, respiratory syncytial virus. And, um, it didn't used to be a problem, but it's a big problem for this age group now. So we'll be offering that as well. And I believe they'll have a, um, pneumonia vaccine too. There's a new one that's coming out. I would check with your doctor about that because, um, if you've had, uh, the pneumonia vaccines within the past five years, it may not be necessary to have it. So it may just be a question for your doctor regarding that one. So lots of vaccines coming.
Just please be watching for alerts from either of us about upcoming dates. Whenever there is a clinic, please bring your insurance card with you. Uh, you don't always necessarily need it, but it's essentially better to have than have to run back to the house or the apartment to get it. Was there a question? The question is, can they be done on the same day? They can, um, it's probably more personal choice, um, and how sore you want each arm to be. I think so.
The flu and the RSV can be done at the same time. That should not cause any problems. If you do the COVID and the flu at the same time, uh, you might plan for a few days recovering. Yes, the, the COVID vaccine will be on, uh, at one day, hopefully the end of September. And then the, uh, flu and RSV would be in, end of October. Yes. And one more thing. Yes, um, because, and thank you all so very much for, for coming to the health fair, uh, yesterday. It was wonderful. We had, um, almost 300 people sign in, um, with the vendors. There's probably 350 people that were here, um, yesterday, 38 vendors. So it was a whole lot of fun. And we still have door prizes that I have in my office. So, uh, some of the winners, um, Carol Shortridge. Yay. Uh, Bob Cable. Patty Eaton, Nancy Wilder. Nevin Lurkey. Phyllis Rhodes. Alan Bates and Mary Ziegler. Oh, and Nan Herbert. Nan Herbert has one too. So, um, your door prizes are in my office. And if they don't, if you guys don't come get them, well, we'll see what happens.
Who won the big OSU bucket?
Oh.
The tailgate bucket.
Oh, Barbara Doolittle. That's
Oh, that's awesome. That's great.
There was a lot of things in that basket.
Okay. And last, but not least, the indispensable, unsinkable Irene Brown.
So real quick, uh, we, um, Angie Bennett, those of you who know Angie, uh, she is, uh, our wellness assistant, works with Irene in her office, takes a lot of your reservations. She's going to need to be spending some more time with her, with her family and her parents. And so, uh, as of September 26th, uh, she'll be leaving us. So we're going to, uh, we're going to post, uh, post a position. Um, and Irene and I are working together to find a replacement. But we wish Angie the best and the best for her, for her parents and hopefully, uh, fast recovery. So thank you very much.
Irene, for those of you who keep your finger on the pulse of Hollywood, you may have heard that Netflix is discontinuing their DVD rental service, which is what we have relied on for our movies for a very long time. The great news is that Dennis and Jesse have done their usual thinking ahead and they are arranging for us to have streaming capabilities, which means we will have much more movies to choose from and, uh, newer movies, all of that. So that's coming down the pike. Next month, October, we're going to feature some, uh, classics from our wonderful libraries here on campus while we transition into the streaming, um, to give our wonderful movie techs a chance to get used to the new system, which should be much easier, uh, than it has been. And a shout out to those movie techs. They are Wayne Tremble, Sarah Jenkins, Mike Reynolds, Gary Van Fossen, Don Herzler and John Marquess. Let's give them a hand. And lastly, would the summer school teachers in the interest of time start to make your way up to the front? While I say that we have something really truly to celebrate here at Trinity Woods and that is the great success of this year's summer school. Wow. Thanks to your fellow members, we had a record number of 11 different classes offered with 27 total sessions. But best of all, 140 different people attended at least one class and many attended several. That too is a record. You all truly embraced summer school and showed once again that this is a community of lifelong learners. But all of that success would not be possible without these wonderful, wonderful teachers. And I'm going to introduce them in chronological order. Mike Reynolds led us off teaching Plan More, Worry Less About End of Life. Thank you, Mike. Marcia Bates is downstairs working in the treasure chest. It is open today. She taught the greenhouse effect, the climate and us. Kudos to Marcia. Bob Mansfield taught New Testament theology simplified. Thank you, Bob. Cheryl and Sunflower taught Intro to Hand and Foot. That is a card game for those of you who weren't in the class. Tony Dixon presented food and wine pairings just in time for our licensing. Then we have May Timmons, who is doing her usual volunteering bit at Portichelli today, who taught impressions of hospice. Lou Felts taught Intro to Mahjong. And a wonderful team taught Adult Vacation Bible School this summer. They were led by Marita Morgan, who is not here today, and Elizabeth Bartlett. Here's Elizabeth at the end. And they were ably supported and enabled by Suzanne Davis. Oh, Suzanne is, there's Suzanne. Julia Couch was also part of Adult VBS. Don Herzler taught what it means to be human. Charlotte Frazier, Breaking the Age Code. That was very eye opening. And Doris Piatek ended our wonderful, wonderful summer school season with poets, ponder people. We're going to take a quick photograph of these marvelous folks. Let's give them one more hand. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks to you all for being the students.